I tried to open your chest, John. I saw 1117 State, man. He was reaching down there for it. Oh, I got paid.
What's that?
I got paid.
And to think we get paid for this.
I can buy a scheme pizza.
What's that?
Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, May 13th. Go ahead and get this going at four o'clock. We'll go ahead and do our roll call. Mayor Shirley here. Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Everyone that's capable up in the audience, if we could all stand up and do our pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looks like we don't have any awards and proclamations. Go ahead and go over to some citizen forums. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on the agenda. Mr. Sen, our name and address, please.
My name's Tracy Sen and my address is 340 and a half, South Connecticut. And thank you so much, Mrs. Mayor, for giving us this opportunity and commissioners as well. Thank you. I just would like to let 305, 305, the school system, would like to have a program such as ROP or JTPA. ROP stands for Regional Occupation Program. It's mainly for the poor family out there that doesn't have enough money or on food stamps or on any assistant government things. I would beg the businesses around Salina to hire these kids from high school and give a career curriculum with career opportunity to better their family lives and to also better the community so that way we don't have a lot of crimes or uneducated people. Just because we're poor, we're not dumb and stupid, and please give us an opportunity. The program, again, is called ROP. R stands for regional, O is occupation, P is for program, and JTPA is job training, job training program assistance to the poor family living here in Salina. And I thank you so much for giving me this opportunity, Mrs. Mayor and the city commissioners and everybody else.
Thank you. And that's something definitely to bring up to the school board, too, with Mr. Black. So that would be something he'd love to hear, I'm sure. Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring up? CNN will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on the naming of municipal facility request for the naming of a park property recently acquired from USD 305. Subitem 5.1A, resolution number 137,000, naming the newly acquired park property as River Woods Nature Area.
All right. Dionne, we'll go ahead and get that started.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, the item before you today is a resolution in regards to the municipal naming of a facility we recently acquired from USD 305. I'll run through a little bit of background and then see if we have any questions and see if I can answer them for you. On January 8th of 2007, the City Commission approved Resolution Number 066343, which adopted the City of Salina Municipal Facility Guidelines. Basically, these guidelines are used as a foundation for future naming as properties are acquired or property names may come up that folks want to use or that people want to use. These are the opportunities or the steps that would need to be taken to make that occur. On April 5th, the Parks and Recreation Department filed an application with the city per those guidelines to request that the property be considered for naming. On April 11th, that request was determined to be valid, so it has moved through those steps of the process. The nature of this request is in regards to the landmark naming option within the guidelines and policies. River Woods Nature Area is the proposed name at this point for the piece of property. The piece of property is located basically just off the dike at Red Cloud, I'm sorry, at Cloud and Red Fox Lane. There's the piece of property there. It is strictly a nature area with a trail that meanders through it. There is a bike path, walk path that will be, that has been started through there and we've had good feedback on so far, but it's really going to be nature-driven and educational, interpretive and things such as that, so we thought that that name was the right way to go. As part of the steps that the commission would take, one of those is during the April 17th Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, they went through and looked at different options for name. This is the name that they are recommending to you. As part of that, the City Commission shall, some of your steps will be review the city clerks verification to make sure it's in compliance with the naming initiative, review the merits of the naming initiative and supporting documentation as provided to see that it meets those needs, take action regarding the municipal facility naming initiative to include approval, denial, recommendation for change, whatever you would deem appropriate at that point. And I talked a little bit about the programming aspect from it. We don't anticipate a lot of active programming there. We anticipate this will be more of a passive area, an area, again, utilized for walking, nature, relaxation. We may put a couple benches in as it meanders, it goes by the river a couple times, we'll probably put a couple benches in there just for people to relax and enjoy the scenery. But at that point, we do have some, in accepting the property, we do have some requirements that we need to meet. Basically, it needs to be educational in nature, there needs to be interpretive elements. We're going to use our natural resources section to be a part of that and to do some programming out there to open it up to schools, to go out and look at nature, to look at different aspects that are available at that particular facility. In conclusion, I would submit the following recommendations for your consideration. Adopt Resolution 13-7,000, authorizing the naming of the property to River Woods Nature Area. Decline Resolution Number 137,000, excuse me, or recommend an alternative or provide further direction to staff. I would open it up for questions or thoughts.
I know it's maybe just a general question for me. Are there hours on that like there are regular parks?
Same hours as a regular park would have.
Is there signage or anything on there for that?
There is no signage yet. Per the plan, this is a step that we have to get before we can do any signage.
Sure. Again, this is purely just...
But our intent, and that's a very good question, our intent is to add, if this were to be approved, would be to add signage through a signage fund that we have in place through our alcohol tax fund that's part of the CIP. So there's signage set aside for each of the parks and we would make it mirror those from a sign look standpoint as well as operating hours.
Does it have improved parking area?
It does not. It does not. Really, the only access right now is really off of the dike or off the levee as you go across there, so. Or you, there is, if you're coming up cloud, there's places you could park, but it's really not improved parking, it's not designated parking for that specific facility.
So is there going to be signage on the dike then? I mean, is it meant to be used as somebody that's on the dike and going down?
That would be our intent because off of cloud right there, there's, you've got an access point right there. We would try to direct it there and then our trailhead signage for all trails, we would try to have it there and have it labeled within that as well that we have that piece of property and where it's located out in relationship.
Do you anticipate the need to improve the parking there at any time?
What I wanted... It's a good question. I think depending on the usage that we would see and the amount of traffic that we'd see, if the need dictated, that might be something that we'd have to look at. Right now, I would say that, and I don't have anything scientific to base this on, but I would say the majority of the traffic is coming off of the levee.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from the public?
Thanks.
Okay, since we have no more questions, I can... Any commissioners want a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution 137,000, authorizing the naming of the property to River Woods Nature Area.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, and, sorry, excuse me, my allergies. All of those not in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Excuse me. Moving on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 6, 2013.
Is there anything any commissioner would like to remove from our consent agenda?
Or change.
Or change.
That's okay. If passed, passed muster this time.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to development business, we have none, so administration.
Item 8.1, award a bid for mobile data terminal laptops.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, today I bring to your request to award a bid for 48 mobile data terminals, also known as MDTs. Our current set of MDTs are on year five of a five-year cycle and they need to be replaced this year since our maintenance contract was for five years. Police Department, Fire Department, and the County Sheriff vehicles all use the same MDT equipment and are all connected via cellular to shared equipment and shared software. MDTs and the shared software supports them are a great example of city-county cooperation. We open sealed bids on April 30th and then organize the bids in dollar order, lowest first. The first three lowest bids did not meet our bid specifications, but the fourth lowest did. The lowest bid on a device that met our specs is what I, on behalf of the police, fire, and sheriff's office, am bringing to you today. Staff is recommending that you award the MDT bid for 48 mobile data terminals to tag global in the amount of $102,576. This purchase is part of the 2013 capital improvement program, sub-CIP for computer technology. The 2013 budget item, which we did about a year ago, was for $150,000. This bid came in considerably lower than our budget. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Are these, these are Itronics from General Dynamics, if I remember. Are they compatible with the mounts and everything we already have in the vehicles? Or is there any anticipated cost of that?
We had one in to test and it's perfect, so there's no, we have to change anything at all in the vehicles.
Everything should be okay, because I think that's what we have there now is Itronics, I think. Okay, so saved costs there, too. Were the others, would the others have also required some? I'm just curious from the bidding...
They would have required some adjustment.
Okay.
Is there a cost for the maintenance of these units?
Built-in, five years, bumper-to-bumper.
I was wondering if you could ever look at separating the two and determining whether it'd be more cost-effective to self-insure and buy a dozen extra computers and if one shoots craps on you, then just reach out, get another box and...
The thing that gets you on that is you need, they need to be semi-rugged because they're in public safety. Quite honestly, they get beat up pretty bad.
Yeah, they're tough.
But the touchscreen is a big deal. We have to have that. A nice cell battery, then a backlit keyboard, and then it needs to be Verizon 4G and that really separates from what you can get cheap.
Well, so then, the units, you're just replacing one-to-one here, right? With the 48, six units?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight? How many of those units required maintenance over the course of the five years? What percent? Any idea on that?
You know, I bet we probably touched 80, 90% of them over time. The five-year warranty is a big thing. A lot of vendors pocket that. This particular vendor does not. And we have had MDT in a sheriff's vehicle that was involved in a really bad wreck, just shattered the screen, it still came up, sent it in to replace it for nothing, and they pay all the freight going and all the freight coming back. It saves us a lot of money. But, you know, we have looked at cheaper ones and as a committee between the sheriff, fire, and police, worked our chicken to do that. Quite honestly.
Yeah, and I understand your question. I mean, and I think it's a good question just to say how much, but I would agree that, I mean, even in my time, you know, as a reserve, I know that we were constantly having them. Not, I shouldn't say constantly, but there's always updates and upgrades and, you know...
If we could go from like a $4,000 really good unit to $1,000 cheap, maybe.
Yeah.
Just something. When I'm talking 21, 2200, by the time I get a cheap one that has all these features, I'm, you know, 1,500.
I'm not saying buy a cheaper machine, I'm just saying buy extras of the ones that you are already buying anyway.
Gotcha.
And pull it off the shelf, but if 80 or 90% of them require maintenance over the five-year period of time, you'll never buy enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good.
And just a quick question, too, on the, on the units that are obsolete that'll be taken out of service, what happens to those?
Well, some of them will be so beat up, we'll probably put them on the auction block, but some will be good and we'll just stash them and use them. We have a lot of older equipment in the field that other people in the field are using, non-public safety, and this would be, the old ones would be a good up there for some of theirs, so I'll use those.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions for staff? Any questions from the audience? CNN, I entertain a motion.
I move to forward the contract to tag global for the purchase of 48 custom-configured rugged laptops in the amount of $102,576. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Item 8.2, authorizing appraisal services agreement for the North Cloud Improvements, project number 112872.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Right-of-way appraisal services are part of a lot of our projects, acquisition as well as figuring out what the property is worth. This is actually a KDOT-sponsored project where we have $350,000 of a grant that we're utilizing for it, and so it'll be let by KDOT. And we're looking at trying to get right-of-way an acquisition starting here pretty soon and for a 2014 project. Basically, the RFP, we sent some RFPs out to try to find who was able to do it, and there were, there were not a lot of companies that were able to make the deadline we were hoping to have, so we looked at, was our deadline too tight or were they too busy? Or, you know, what the costs were as well. And in the meantime, basically, Clark Meisenlinville has done right-of-way work for us in the past and they're, they were available. And then we have a local appraiser, Jeff Holgerson here in town, who has done a lot of appraising for the city over the years as well, and he was available, so we felt like it's a, instead of trying to go back out and find other appraisers, most of the time the companies are in Kansas City or Wichita and they seem to be fairly busy in those places at this time. So it was, felt like it was a good fit to have right-of-way appraisal services, real estate appraisal services do our appraisals and then have Clark Meisenlinville help us with the acquisition process. Let's see, I guess, project is, of course, Cloud and Ninth Street, so it's a challenging project as far as property acquisition goes. We're not looking to do any relocation services or anything, it's just there's, you know, it's a very tight intersection and we've worked with all the property owners thus far to try and come up with something that we can balance in there and fit with all the different challenges we have as far as right-of-way and building locations and access and driveways and utilities, just all kinds of challenges in there. So we have had quite a few public meetings, two to be exact, that are public-public, and then we've met with property owners individually many times other than that, so we feel like part of them, you know, you can talk about a lot of challenges to the project, but then you also have to talk, okay, how much, how much is that worth? And so it helps to get the appraisal part started and then we can start talking, either making changes to the project as necessary or buying the property and allowing us to do the improvements that, kind of the balancing effect of what improvements and what, what everything, what things we can get done with the right-of-way that we have. So I guess, as far as, I guess, questions, I guess, any other questions you have about the project or about just hiring an appraiser to start to, to start the appraisal process?
Any questions for staff?
I do. In your public meetings with the, with the property owners, have you met with pretty much all of them?
Yes.
And everybody pretty happy with the, with the plan looks and moving forward?
Yeah, surprisingly, yes. We have one that has a, they're just, they're affected most by the project, so it's, it's tough, but we keep, keep finding ways to give them more parking or narrow lane width here that gives them a little more room or utilize, you know, some landscaping that they already have and go around it with the sidewalk. I mean, it's the kind of stuff you just have to do and I think they basically understand that we're doing the best we can. So at the end of the day, though, they are going to get paid for some of the stuff they lose, and so it's what they're interested in now at this point.
Did they have input, did they have input in on this? Is that, because I see the diagonal parking in there, too, and I assume that some of that was...
Yeah, diagonal parking and where your entrance is and where your, you know, locations of how many parking spots you have and how close we get with all the improvements, so, yeah, they've had quite a few, quite a bit of input thus far. We haven't met with one key property owner on the corner, so it's, just don't know why. We've tried to meet with them, but it's just not somebody we've been able to, either not interested or, hey, basically, once you start doing the appraisals and getting through the acquisition process, typically, that's when they, okay, we're serious and we're, we'll come talk to you now, but until then, it's hard to force somebody to meet with you.
Is it the grocery store on the southeast or southwest corner? Or is that the property that...
No, it's the northwest corner.
Northwest.
I think that's what you meant.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what you meant, yeah.
Yes.
Well, that'd be the...
Grocery store.
I would think they're one of the more affected ones, aren't they? Or, no, maybe not?
Yeah, that, that whole corner is, there's quite a diff, there's a couple, quite a few property, well, a couple other property owners as well.
I know we're pretty far into this project already, I mean, a little ways, but, you know, I, I keep going by the intersection and just thinking of simple fixes and, and I don't mean to, when is this, when is this due to take place?
Well, just as we go through the acquisition process and finalize the plans and then try to get utilities relocated, we're thinking 2014 construction at this point.
Okay, so there's some time. You know, when I'm over there, what strikes me, and what do we tend to, actually, maybe I should ask a few more questions before I make myself look like a complete moron. What is, what seems to be the major issue that we have there? Is it stacking traffic? Is it accidents? Is it, and I remember some of this from before, it's, this is again more for the at-home players.
Stacking, major problem. The alignment wasn't the, kind of the start of this whole thing.
Sure.
It's all misaligned and each corner's offset too much to, it's, it's a challenge. So trying to realign things, give us a little more stacking on the north side, which is where we're going to have an extra lane, which should help. And then timing of the signal is another component to that. The parking is definitely another, that's where the, you know, the accidents that occur because of that, so all those things we feel like are, you know, as far as the safety improvements, why we got the grant, anything we can do to improve it at this point.
Sure. My, my thoughts are, and again, I just come back, I just, there's that realization that these things have been this way a long time and it's like the drivers have almost adapted to it. So the change, I don't, you know, I almost wonder that that's too much a variable. Where I see the biggest problem is, is the stacking, and it's, it's the north-south stacking, it's not the east-west. And I'm no traffic flow expert and I'll be the first to admit it, and I know we don't have one on staff anymore, do we? I just think if you added five seconds to the north-south light, you know, it'd be offset, that, that light's going to be a little longer. I think what happens is, is I look and there's not enough time for those cars that are sitting there at Cloud Street to make, make a complete cycle through the cars that are backed up from Claflin to Cloud. So if you're, if you're sitting right in front of Quick Shop on Ninth Street and you get a green light, it's red before you get there. And if it was three to five seconds longer, you'd be through, and I think you could avoid some of that stacking. And I'm just wondering if we could do some intermediate sort of fix, and I know that this, this ball is already rolling, but, you know, it, it just seems like that would be, again, I look at the overall picture, people have adapted to it, we don't have that many accidents, but the stacking is the problem. How do you get rid of stacking? Run that light three to five seconds longer? I mean, what's the harm in trying that? Do we need a, an act of God or can the five of us say, hey, that makes sense and let's do it? Now, if there's a bunch of accidents, I don't want to be on the hook for it. It will get us more calls for the fire department.
Wouldn't that create more traffic going the other way, though? If you have the longer, you have your longer light going one way, it's going to create a backup.
It's a balancing of trying to lengthen out one way at the expense of the other and it's, you know, we've...
But, but what I see, and you got to remember that I grew up in that house right there, so I've been around Cloud Street for almost 40 years, so I'm pretty familiar with that traffic there, and the east-west just doesn't build up. And that's my thoughts, is that, is that, regardless, five seconds longer in the east-west is a lot more manageable than backed up all the way down Ninth Street. I just think that that's a lot more acceptable alternative. And I'm not saying scrap this project at all unless we change this in a month from now, we go, hey, well, what do you know, this is really working out, then we can come back and say, well, it doesn't matter if we're getting $350,000 because the project's going to cost us, what, a million something? You know, if we can look at, I mean, I'm just throwing, you know, I'm the outside-of-the-box guy, so, I mean, it's, I don't know.
I like your comment on that, but what I'm seeing here is that you're, you're fixing an alignment problem that is a big problem. The other thing, the other thing I like about the project is that I think you make that northeast corner a lot more attractive to, for somebody to come in and develop that by kind of clearing up some of that traffic and congestion. So it may be somewhat of an incentive for someone to fight, to do something permanent on that corner versus the greenhouse thing every spring is on.
Well, I, I think that's a good idea, except for that's going to be a parking lot for Kansas Westland, I think, is what that's already identified for, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on any future development. I mean, I think that's what they've got it scheduled for. That doesn't mean that can't change, but, I mean, it, it could be, I mean, that's a valid point.
In that case, it makes it easier to get in and out with the parking.
Yeah, and that, and that could be, too.
Yeah, I mean, when you stack all the way past Claflin, I mean, you impact Claflin, you impact woodland, there's just, there's all the entrances and exits to the businesses. I mean, it's, it's, it's all of that. If you lengthen out the light, then you impact more, I mean, that doesn't really, helps you some. You can try to time those exactly and precisely, but it just feels like if we could add a lane there, we would really help everything. That's what this is doing. Dan, as part of it, you have stacking, but you have dedicated left turns as well. Do you have a situation during peak times when the efficiency of the intersection is much lower than it is needed to be, that you have issues with the, with the single lane going in? Is this, I can't remember, single lane or double lane? It widens, it has become a double lane going into that intersection, does, and then you have the left turn and the right turn. Is there any interference with those two lanes, how they interact together? Well, the double, it's a double lane, you have, you have... The right lane is a right turn only, so you got to make up your mind. That's one of the issues that we have there is if you don't make up your mind until it's too late, you might not get in the left turn lane, which gives you straight through northbound or left turn.
And you don't know it till you get clear up there.
Yeah, so that's something that probably is part of what needs to be remedied, presuming. Well, the, when we looked at that, it would cost another half a million bucks to try to solve that problem, so it was really the southbound backing through Claflin that we felt like we could, we could solve with this problem. We're not going to solve that problem with this. The, the right turns will still be...
Still going to be a right turn.
Still going to be a right turn.
So...
Stacking for northbound, it wasn't as long as a stacking for southbound, but, I mean, there is still, there is still stacking there, it just functioned better on the south side of the intersection than the north side.
Maybe potentially better road signage, I mean, better right turn arrows coming out earlier?
You know, people who probably drive there as a habit know that, and then it's an issue of, do I just like to wait to the last second and then take my chances or do I plan ahead with my lanes? And if they plan ahead with their lanes, they do it probably within the mile prior to that. As far as the traffic signal timing, too, I mean, you guys can play with a lot of things, it might be worth doing that, but I presume that the, the engines, the civil engineers or traffic engineers have looked at signal timing as one of the various aspects? Yeah, and they said there's some things that we can improve there, no question. So, yeah, you can make it a staggered left so that they don't get left at the same time. You stagger them, so everybody going north, they get the left. Everybody's just sitting there going south. So there's, in bigger cities, you see where they're, I don't know what the word is, you don't, you both don't turn left at the same time. You, you wait and get everybody through and then, then the others get to come through. So it's, it's a way that you, it's just different for Salina, so it's a little concerning. We try to implement that because it's not the way we're used to driving and it would be a major change there, but it is something that we, you know, we're looking at with KDOT to see, is that really going to help us? Or if we make these improvements, is that even necessary?
Are, are the left lanes weight-activated or, or, I know there's also the look, look, I weight maybe not the latest, greatest, but, but there is some form of...
Loops, their detection, yes.
A detection, and then it goes to green light when, a steady light, a yield-left turn when the, the green light disappears and traffic begins to flow?
Correct.
My thoughts are more cars coming from the left, they still have that, that yield opportunity when the south lanes clear out to get more through.
Right.
Three seconds doesn't seem like a lot, but when the traffic's already flowing, it might be enough to get three more, three more cars across.
Yeah, and the other thing was trying, we don't have a lot of left turns southbound to eastbound. So there's another thing is to shorten the left turns there or to not even give them a, a protection where you just, they just got to pick their gaps. So that's another way you can eliminate six-second minimum plus four-second yellow. Well, there's ten seconds right there. So they're, they've looked at, we've looked at a lot of those things thus far, trying to figure out what would be the best.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't, like I said, I didn't mean to throw this whole thing off and I assume the project will still continue to move forward. I just want to make sure we've extinguished all the abilities that, that we, we already have, the options we have in place. And I, I mean, like I said, growing up over there for forty years and using that street regularly, it just seems to me that that single thing is what keeps those cars stacked up. It's just a little too short to get one full, uh, street emptied out across. There's always, like I said, if you're already.
Southbound?
Going southbound, yeah. If you're in front of Quick Shop, you're stuck.
Has been mentioned today as northbound. I mean, does everybody feel northbound is bad or does southbound?
I don't see the, I don't see people setting through a, a single light northbound generally, generally.
Because they're going to have more opportunity to get through. I didn't know if northbound is an issue. If you can solve southbound, well, the northbound has more time.
It seems that southbound is really the, is really the issue. And again, like you said, there's not a lot of east turning off there. I do tend to see more, more heading, heading back west from the south. But, but, I, just some thoughts, just some thoughts to put out there to.
Has, has the synchronization program started?
That's a good point. Because yeah, we haven't started that yet. And that, that's the hope is maybe that'll help us too. But we're still, you know, we have to balance nineteen, nineteen different timings or signals. And is it really going to help that much? Well, I think it'll help you on the travel time on the corridor, but we've got a back, we've got a bottleneck right here. So I don't know how much that's going to help. But we're, as we implement that, we're hoping to run some timings and see. So it's all kind of, got a lot to do here.
But this might be part of the solution of the synchronization?
Yeah, oh, yes, it definitely is. Now, this, you know, you synchronize and then if you have, if you can make improvements to the intersection, that helps you for the whole corridor. So we, the corridor is pretty tight all the way to Cloud. And then once you get past Cloud, then you've got plenty of capacity.
If there's a bottleneck, you've got to deal with it.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty short distance between Claflin and Cloud. And synchronization between those two intersections should provide some improvement there as well.
Dan, do, do we have walk lights there? I can't remember for, for, there's a lot of pedestrians.
Less they've changed, they've always been there, yeah.
Yeah, they have, they're there. And that's, that's a big challenge, trying to figure out where to put the sidewalk. Because we, trying to put in a sidewalk on all four corners and where are they going to go? So that's using some of the private property to a certain extent. There's a sidewalk where they, you know, they pull in and they park. There's a nice sidewalk next to the building. Well, the only place we can really use that sidewalk is to get a pedestrian amusement and use that as a public way. And then they understand that, they make, they think that's the most sense because then you can actually still get, save some of your parking that way. We use kind of what it's already an existing sidewalk so that we're going to have better pedestrian access through there, but it'll just be kind of unique, more like a downtown, you know, up against a building sidewalk instead of near the street, behind parking and trying to navigate people through parking lots is not what you want.
It's just a poor intersection all the way around. Hopefully, this will help.
Having said that, is there any consideration to bicycle traffic on this? Potential bicycle lanes or anything like that?
Nope.
The, won't the cross, crosswalk technology be updated since we're putting this in?
Yes.
So it should make a difference with that.
Yeah, we'll have to have the ADA accessible push buttons with the audible crosswalk signals.
Yeah, and Commissioners, one thing that was talked about before is as we replace these.
Countdowns?
Going with the countdown style so that you don't have to guess when the beep's going to stop. You can actually see it countdown to zero.
Yeah, I was cornered this morning on that very issue. I'm glad to see you address me.
Yeah.
That comes up from time to time with certain people. Yes, you get cornered on that a lot.
Which is okay, which is, it's fine.
We are getting more bicycle riders.
Yeah, the late left-hand turn. And I don't, if I hear that quote one more time.
Since we're.
But it's true, that is the accident causer.
Well, we're an obese community, according to Health Department. So we need to ride bicycles.
One of five of us is right up here. Yeah, I'm working on it. It's those cookies. Well, yeah, I didn't mean to throw us off. I mean, is that something everybody would at least want to consider? Or are we too far into this thing to waste our time? Or, I mean, is, I mean, it sounds like you've looked at it. Do I just need to say, add three seconds and see if anybody?
Yeah, maybe we can just add three seconds, see if that helps.
I mean, I.
We'll look at all the other things that, that go with that. But I, I don't, I'll have to see what the, you know, what the length is now to see if, well, if you have three seconds from four to five, if that really helps. But it could. And we're doing, we're doing the synchronization anyway so that, you're going to see some changes there.
When does that take place, though?
Well, we just got the data last week and we should start.
Oh, okay, oh, you already into that, okay.
The synchronization's point was, or the funds were approved last year. And we had, the same consultant that's working on this helped us with the whole corridor, gave us the timings, we're working out the details and the different phasings for.
Oh, well, if that's, yeah, if that's the case, yeah.
And that, that'll actually be here in the next, at least, I'd say, month.
Okay, yeah, well, there's no sense in going, yeah, if you've got hard data from them, you don't need a city commissioner to know the first thing about traffic control telling you how the hell to do traffic control.
You will see some, you should see some changes through there. Once we try to start synchronizing them and adding time and getting rid of time on different streets. So it's, it's going to change a little bit through there. And then we'll run travel time through the, through the corridor and through the intersection and see if it's improved at all. This project, though, will, will really help the, the backup, the backlog of it, so.
Sure.
We, we hope.
That's the hope, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. CNN, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agreement with Real Estate Appraisal Services Incorporated for appraisal services for city project number eleven dash two eight seven two Ninth and Cloud, improvements in an amount of $12,500 plus a contingency of $5,000 for a total of $17,100.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero.
Item eight point three, emergency medical services. Sub item eight point three A, resolution number thirteen seven zero zero four, admitting the city has lined a comprehensive fee schedule by establishing fees for emergency medical services. Sub item eight point three B, resolution number thirteen seven zero zero five, adopting the position classification and salary schedule for city public safety employees. Sub item eight point three C, authorize the implementation of part-time workforce for medical ambulance transfers.
Boy, that was easy, wasn't it? My dear Commissioners, thank you this afternoon. This basically just brings forward our last week's discussion into a formal action stage before you. The actual items that you got today before you is the revision of the comprehensive fee schedule, which takes the adjusted rate increase. So we talked about the flat rate and the adjusted rate. But take, in the resolution, it has the adjusted rate increase. Also, the resolution adopting the position classification salary schedule changes that would implement the new pay ranges and positions for the paramedics. Paramedic two and paramedic three. And lastly, is to authorize the implementation of a part-time workforce for medical ambulance transfers. You know, last week, Commissioner Blanchard asked the question, will we get more details next week? And I said, yes, we have some details, but between then and today, we've decided, I had met with the city manager over the last week. And we looked at, looked at implementing this, what it would take and, and that sort of stuff. And, and, you know, our goal has been from the very beginning to limit the budgetary impact in doing anything right now. And, and I was telling, telling Jason that, you know, I believe I've got the existing line item funding to make this happen. You know, to where I don't necessarily have to allocate so many X number of dollars. If I can just use my existing line item funding, I can get this off the ground and make it work. Because we do have dollars budgeted to cover overtime and things like that for transfers. So there's, there's that component built into the budget already. And I think that to keep things simple, that's the reason it is before you today in that, in that vein, is just to authorize implementation of it. Let us work through the actual execution of it using our current existing line item funding, get it off the ground and, and certainly we can show you the benefits of that in the future. I did take the opportunity to visit with the county administrator last week, Rita Dicer. And I was going over this with Rita because I asked her out of the study session. I said, Rita, did you have any concerns about, you know, what we talked about? And she said, well, so I'm really concerned about, you know, where the money, seed money is going to come for this part-time ambulance services. And I said, well, so oddly enough, we talked about it, we're going to use our existing. And she said, well, you're going to want us to pay for that? And I said, well, no. I said, I said, I think I've got the funding already existing in there to get this off the ground. She said, oh, she said, that's really good. She said, that's really out-of-the-box thinking. I wish we did more of that more often. And with that, that's the reason you have it before you today. But to get back to the commission report, there is some more, there is some things that you'll see. And I, like I told you last week, I just cut and pasted exactly out of the CPI process document into this commission report and into that study session last week. A lot of the things that you saw last week are repeated in this commission report. There is some additional background information in the shaded areas that I've included with that. But the rates are a very modest adjustment. It only really deals with some of the ALS non-emergency and BLS non-emergencies take kind of the biggest jump, you know? But other than that, that's kind of a routine thing. We do that every year to keep up with Medicare and what insurance will cover. You know, we, we, just for people that don't realize, generally, we, on the revenue side of the ledger, we generally have about forty percent of our revenue comes from Medicare. About forty percent from insurance companies. And about the remaining twenty percent, we get about, oh, fifteen, twelve, fifteen percent probably from individual pays and things like that. And then from collection services for people that don't pay and that kind of stuff adds to that revenue total. So it gives you an idea of where the revenue comes from. When you look at fees across the industry, they all are doing, taking modest increases because things just cost a little bit more. So that being, are there any questions about the rates, rate adjustments that you have from last week at all?
I think we went over that pretty good last Monday on our study session.
Okay, let me move forward to the positions then. You know, I, I had the opportunity today to have Chief meet today. I meet with him every five weeks and I said, Chief Kelsey's shift happens to be on today. And I met with him and went back over this. And I said, this is something that, that has existed for thirty years, setting up a, a career path that didn't exist before for paramedics. And, you know, I've got a very few questions about it. Most of them understand that sort of thing. They wished everybody got paid more, but they realized the necessity to correct this for the paramedics. There wasn't any of the, of the you're getting this, I need to get that sort of thing that went on this morning. And I think they realize that's a great opportunity to correct a weakness in our system for a long period of time. So you see exactly the same thing that we talked about last, last Monday in the study session, setting up the paramedic apprentice, the regular paramedic class, paramedic two and paramedic three classifications. And all of that's contained. They did give you an updated pay schedule because we found a little typo in it that dealt with the engineer, a paramedic classification. And oddly enough, one of our captains spotted that this morning and says, hey, I want to go back and be an engineer. They're making more than what battalion chiefs make. So they fixed that and Natalie got that fixed for us and stuff. So it doesn't take them long to sort through that and say, well, where am I and where are you? And, you know, what would be best? You know, it's just the way things work in life. And, but anyway, it's, it's a very good adjustment for us. Is there any questions from last week or today about the pay classifications and where these people will go into and, and why?
I just have a quick question on, on, kind of relating to when there was discussion about the things when they talked to human resources, what their main concerns were. And that was kind of acknowledgement, pay, those things. In, in the last week, I had a, just a thought of, of career path-wise. Do some of these EMTs, EMS people have further career ambitions that might involve education towards being nurses, doctors, those type of things?
Yes, they do. In fact, there's a great bridge program. You know, when I talk to students in high school and things like trying to get them ginned up to come into the emergency services, they have a great list of, of young women and a workforce that wants to be nurses. And, you know, there's a pretty good waiting line to become a nurse. I mean, you just don't jump out there and become a nurse and get through school. And I asked them, I said, did you know that once you become a paramedic and there's a bridge program, puts you ahead of everybody else? And it's, it's a fairly short program. How long is it, Shane, the bridge program?
Eleven months.
Eleven months, eleven months, they become an RN in eleven months, once they're a paramedic. I said, here's an opportunity for you, come into work for us. You know, it was a surprise to some people that we put our own paramedics through paramedic school. I said, we'll pay to put you through school. We'll put you through paramedic school and you can become an RN in eleven months.
A lot of them go on to be PAs, don't they?
Right, and, and I've been, to be honest with you, when I was in Park City as a fire chief there, the best ER doctor I ever saw was, was a guy named Steve Crabtree. He was a paramedic that came from, came from Norman, Oklahoma, started on the street as a paramedic, became a PA, a physician, an emergency physician. And just, you know, those guys get hooked up, men and women both get hooked up into that thing and it becomes self-driving. And I think that's a wonderful thing. I worked with one in Stillwater, his name was Seth Cougarly. That he, last I knew, was in the medical school there in Tulsa, started out as a paramedic.
Right.
And so that's what I want for our community. I want people to come into these things, get engaged, whether they want to be physicians, whether they want to stay in the street. You know, one of the things that happens is when you make, when you make medical officer or fire captain, generally you get a gold badge. You get a gold badge, badges below that are silver badges. There's a discussion among the administration now that when they make medic three or paramedic three, that they would get a gold badge because that's a, that's quite an accomplishment. And we want those people not only to have the pay, but the prestige that goes with it. And, and that's what I told them today in a shift meeting. I says, you know, it's easy for you to say as a fire captain, well, I supervise this guy, I ought to make more than he does. I said, well, it's not about that, it's about value. Think about a paramedic who's been on the street for twenty years and the experience that he's got and the education that he has and what he can do with that. It's value, it's not necessarily organizational driven. And I think they understand that.
A lot of pride goes behind that.
Exactly, and that ought to be prideful. You know, I, I have a T-shirt that I wear for physical fitness and people will stop me and it says firefighter on it. And they say, well, how can you wear a shirt that says firefighter? I said, that's, that's the most prestigious job we've got. That's the proudest job we have. So, you know, that goes along right with the paramedics. So, but anyway, to get back on, on task here, the positions and, and I hope we've, would you like to hear from Natalie about what she heard from the paramedics, Commissioner?
No, I think she. I think she covered that well during the study session. It was, it was just good to know.
Interesting, even for the people at home, that, that our human resource director sit down with every paramedic, for people that didn't hear that last week, and talk to every paramedic and ask them, what do you like about your job? What do you not like your job? What can we change to make it more rewarding, more fulfilling for you to stay in that job and stay hooked up with that? Because it's a very difficult job, you know, long-term because you carry a lot of baggage over the years. So appreciated your attention last week. The last, the last item is, is starting that, that transfer service. And we talked about that this morning too, had very few questions about it. They were concerned, the guys on the floor were concerned about, well, are, are they going to take over all the transfers? And I said, no. I said, we talked about that in the study session. I said, I'm guestimating here. I said, we will always take the critical cares, we will always take critical transfers. I said, what we're talking about is non-critical, non-emergency type routine transfers that would help us out in a pinch. And I said, at the most, I think that this service could pick up, when it's fully functioning, could pick up sixty percent. We're still going to have forty percent load with the critical transfers that we're going to make. It's just, that's just the name of the game. So I think that after they got through that, they understood that and some of the anxiety went away. And they said, well, they said, now what's, now what's some of the details here? How are they going to be used? Are they going to have pagers or are they not? And I says, I can't answer that right now. I said, that's up to Chief Pearson and the medical officers to sculpt the system to fit the need and to balance that out. And I think that if you give me a year to come back to you and look at what we learned, how we balanced it out, I can give you all the details that you would like. But I think we have to get in there and change it and work on it, and change it and work on it until it actually fits us really well, so.
One question on that, Chief. I was just reading down here and I think that's great. I was curious what kind of percentages, not your comprehensive information answered a bunch of my questions. So I appreciate that. The one thing I did notice, it was talking about these part-time employees. They would be required to spend two hour shifts per month on, I'm sorry, two, my big thumb was blocking it. Two four-hour shifts per month on a medic unit in order to keep up, keep them familiar with equipment and placement. Is that above and beyond? Or are you saying they need to at least do a minimum of basically eight hours a month on the truck?
Yeah, they would have to do that, that familiarization, keeps the crews familiar with them, them familiar with their crews. You know, it's not unusual for us to go out on a routine transfer. We go to a routine transfer, we get there, and the person's in an emergency situation. I mean, their coding or something else happens to them out there.
You don't have time for somebody to not remember where something is.
Right, and so, those emergency crews, those transfer crews, they've got to be comfortable working with the guys on the floor and vice versa, to where if they call for assistance, those guys know who they are, they know their capabilities, and they get, they give them assistance.
I guess my question was more of, will this be in addition to the regular transfers?
Yes.
Or, okay, so just as part of a regular thing, it says, look, if you're gonna work our shifts, you gotta at least do two of these four-hour paid transfers? Them just working eight hours a month will not, that doesn't cover that, okay? Because at that time, they're in the trucks alone themselves, and this is...
Well, actually, when they're riding, when they spend their ride time every month, they'll be riding as the third person on a medic unit. They'll have one of our regular paramedics. And, you know, we talked about it, talked a great deal about quality control today, about how do you, how do you attract quality people, how do you judge them? And, you know, we do that all the time, we take people into the department, we have a pretty long acclimation period to judge and evaluate where these people are cut out or suited for the type of efficiency we want out of them. Some people make it, most of them do, some people don't. But by doing this, having them work on the trucks, in addition to doing those routine transfers, we can evaluate their skills constantly and keep them, keep them in the loop, so to speak.
Good.
So, with that, are there any questions that I can answer for you? And we've talked about the budget impacts. One of the things I did do, I thought, you know, it'd be interesting just to come to the meeting today and say, okay, let's pretend that May the 10th is the end of the fiscal year, and we'll just go look back one year from May the 10th, and then compare that to the year previous to that as a fiscal year. So, what's happened over the last two years? Well, when you get off the list of medical categories for those things, transfers are up seven and a half percent, and that grows every year by that much, at least. Anywhere from seven to ten percent, transfers grow by that much. And total medical calls are up eight point three percent over those two-year periods, you know, so it continues, it just validates what you saw in the charts leading into this call volume increase, it goes to show that. So, if there's any further questions, I'd like to, one more thing. This is a really excellent example of a CPI project that's very successful. It's not gonna save you a lot of dollars, you're not gonna have money in your pocket, we're not gonna have money in our pocket from the CPI project. What we will be able to do, we'll be able to sidestep training costs for paramedics coming into the job, we'll be able to retain them longer in their positions, cut our costs over time, and it's a very good project. And I want to thank all the chief officers that worked on this, and Brian Johnson, the heads-up the CPI process, because it's taken them almost a full year to get to this point. When you look at the commission, action items and recommendations, action item one is for the adoption of the resolution for the comprehensive fee schedule, action item number two is to adopt the pay classification changes, and item three is to authorize the implementation of the part-time workforce. Is there any other questions I could answer?
No more questions from staff? And we'll need three separate motions for this, correct?
Yeah, three separate motions. And Commissioners, just real quick, Larry hit on it, but when he talks about twenty years, we don't want to take that for granted, because if you, if you talk to those who are in the, or emergency medical technicians or paramedics for private medical service, you don't, you don't often see them last twenty years because of the difficulty, that type of job, it's extremely stressful and it's hard to do. So, we're fortunate that we have that mixed fire service, and we can structure a plan with career opportunities and other things that help them to stay, for the most part, and it won't work for everyone, but will help them stay with us longer and stay with the community longer and provide the higher-level knowledge and continuity. The other thing, too, Larry was talking about, is service. You know, we like to put titles on things, that's fine, but in essence, we're providing the transfers as a response to the demand of the requests that we get. I mean, we get requests to do that, we don't advertise for that. They ask us to do it, we have people that are capable, that's why we do that. So, what this really does is give you another, what will generally be, and most of the time will be a lower-cost option, to do the same thing that we always do. And so, that's why when we talk about the staffing, it's really gonna relate to the demand in the service. I have a feeling the demand in the service, as Larry mentioned, will keep growing and growing and growing. So, we think about the impact to the others, it's not gonna impact too much, it won't impact the critical stuff, that's a whole different skill set and skill level that's gonna come out of our current folks. It might reduce overtime some, it should reduce overtime some for the cost, but that's okay, because when we do hire, we don't ever say there's an entitlement for overtime, there's entitlement for your annual wage based on, you know, if it's hourly or however it's calculated, depending on the personnel in the city. But our goal has been to continue to right-size ourselves, which means you don't want to have more overtime than is absolutely needed to run an effective operation. This is really a great response to that, it's a good balance in there for everybody. So, I think all in all, it's a pretty good fit for what we're trying to do and do it really well and do it efficiently. So, just kind of wanted to wrap that up for you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just have one question, kind of relates to the recovery rates of this, because you had talked last time about by adding the part-time transfers, that there may be opportunities to market this?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Market the transfer parts to maybe target that marketing towards the services that have a higher recovery rate or a higher pay rate? Because I did notice that we're clicking at about fifty-five percent recovery, and it just seems like if we're gonna increase more and more and more of the service, we kind of wanna maybe get that recovery rate a little bit higher? And maybe, maybe your idea of marketing that might help to get that higher? So, is there any more specifics on that marketing?
Yeah, I think that, I think that, and last week, I kind of misspoke a little bit about, what I said was, in some instances, transfers, particularly non-emergency transfers, if they're not a medical necessity, if it's being done from the family, taking them from a house down on one address to another address, so to speak, and not to a facility or medically necessary, I have been involved in systems where they actually prepay for those. They actually, we know what that transfer's gonna cost and actually prepay for those kinds of things, and that's fine. I mean, that's, whatever it works, generally, you know the people who pay and the people who don't, and, well, sometimes you ask them to prepay some of that stuff. So, some of the recovery can be guaranteed, so to speak, in transfers, and it's a very small percentage. Most of it works without a hitch. I guess, for lack of a better term, I don't know how else to ask your question, I guess.
Well, I like the thinking forward of that, different ways to maybe help bring some of that recovery in.
Well, you know, and that's the point, Commissioner, we really, we've had calls come in here, some of the smaller communities that would have a transfer from their medical facility to Wichita someplace, because they only have two ambulances in town and maybe one volunteer crew, and they don't wanna send them, they don't wanna send them out of town, that's their only emergency response crew. And they call us, and we say, well, no, we can't do that, we're tied up. It'd be nice to say, yeah, we'll take that transfer, and we'll be there in so many hours, and we'll make that transfer for you. And that's how you grow the business. That's really a good point. You know, fire services, EMS services exist in the fire service for three reasons. Number one is the, is the quality of service, because our paramedics are emergency-trained, they commit their lives into those fields and professions, and they all support each other really well, you know? And when you get to looking, looking ahead, there's the reliability factor. If the hospital needs an emergency transfer, if they call us and say, we have an emergency transfer to Wichita, we're there in twenty minutes. They know we're there in twenty minutes. If they can't send a nurse, we send another paramedic instead of a nurse with them, because many of those take two of them in the back and not just one, to take care of that patient. So, the reliability. And the third reason that fire-based EMS services exist is because our rates are lower than almost any private service anywhere you look across the country regardless, because they are, to a certain degree, tax-supported. And by that way, we can keep the pressure off of the rates, keep them down as low as possible, and still provide an exceptional service, because we provide it to seventy thousand people, you know, in Salina and Saline County. And so, I think we have the benefit, like the manager was saying, about a couple of different worlds. This is a different world as far as benefits to the citizens that they may not realize for a fire-based EMS system.
Yeah, this eventually keeps the taxes down, and as Larry was mentioning, you could pay for the whole thing with taxes if you wanted to, if you could, you know, swallow that level of tax liability out there, you could do that. Very few communities do that, and so, you have the ability to balance with the fees. And while it's difficult in the medical industry to have full one-hundred percent coverage through the fees of the service provided, we know that, it's a pretty good balance here, because, and this is really a compliment to Saline County with their role in helping fund the service, it makes a huge difference. A lot of communities have gotten into countywide service and have found themselves heading towards bankruptcy from a practical perspective, because they couldn't balance it out with just the fees. And so, we have a good balance, and I think trying to collect as much as we can at the reasonable levels, as you were mentioning, is a great idea, and we have that backstop of the Saline County's assistance and taxes behind it, and it really does work well in this area.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any comments from anyone in the audience for staff or commission? Okay, I'll go ahead and start these three separate requests here.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution thirteen dash seven zero zero four, admitting Article Five, the city of Salina comprehensive fee schedule by applying the targeted rate adjustments to emergency medical services rates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? First motion carries, first one carries five, zero.
Mayor, I also then would move that we adopt a resolution number thirteen dash seven zero zero five, adopting the position classification and salary schedule for city public safety employees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for item number two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign? Second action item carries five, zero.
Third action, oh, sorry.
I move we authorize the implementation of a part-time workforce for medical ambulance transfers, action item number three.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on action item number three. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Third one carries five, zero. Moving on to other business.
I have an item. I was, got to attend my first Health Department meeting along with Commissioner Crawford, and just wanted to pass along, it was an interesting process, the content was primarily focused on the budget, and of course, Commissioner Crawford can comment, too. It seemed like it was my first interaction with the county commissioners as well, Guile and Price, and they were keenly interested in raising the mileage rate that the people are paid to, to make their visits out in the county, to bring it up to the level that they are reimbursed. I think it was like forty-one cents, and they were gonna take it up to forty-five, and they said, no, let's just take it up to fifty-five or whatever it is. So, that was, that was kind of an interesting thing. The second thing is, Commissioner Blanchard and I just recently attended the Governing Board Institute in Topeka, where we were exposed to other commissioners and city clerks from all over the state of Kansas, and it was an interesting time, we learned a lot about governing, of course, but there was a lot of good networking that occurred as well, and that'll probably surface from time to time as we work through things. I don't know if you guys have anything to say, too?
I have a question on that, from you guys from the Health Board, and maybe this is a Jason question, is what's the latest on the engineer's estimate coming back on the repairs and the feasibility of that?
We expect to get that pretty soon. We've had a couple, in the last couple of weeks, a couple of technical questions of things we had to run off and check and give them some information, so we think we're getting very, very close. Now, with that, so I would say hopefully within the next one to two weeks, maybe closer to this two weeks, but I think we're getting close. Everyone's chomping at the bit to get that number, it's important, it's an important number for us, so we'll keep pushing.